Let's come to work. The pledge tonight, we've got a list of people who are leading, is that right? Do you all want to come forward? Joyce, have you instructed them on where to stand? We have Olivia Perry, Isaac Hollis, Martin Sargee, Landon Fowler, Owen Perry, Carolyn Thomas, Alex Trussler, Evan Norris, and Maya Bridgman. Do you all want to come forward and lead us in the pledge?
I am a patriot to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned there for campus school.
Me too, yes. You're all from campus school, right? You have new windows in your building. They looked a little puzzled, but y'all do have new windows, so. It was really efficient for that, but that was pretty nice. We're going to have a moment of silence. I'd ask you to join me in remembering the family of Mark Harrell. Mark was a friend of mine for probably, I don't know, 35 years. Recently died about two weeks ago from cancer. And had taught for us in a couple of different stints, but most recently at Laverne High School. Until he got too sick to continue, he taught government there. So please remember the Harrell family.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Charles Todd, a former driver, died recently.
Okay. Thank you. We'll join in thinking about him and his family. So let's have a moment of silence.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Just for the benefit of the audience, we have a work session preceding the regular meeting, and we discuss these items often in some depth at that work session. So you might appear to be rushing through, but we have actually looked at this before. No questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Mr. Gill, you've got an introduction to make.
We do. I'm proud to introduce the new employee, Board of Education, Kevin Whittington. Kevin is an assessment and data research coach. Title was partially assigned by the state as part of the Race the Top money. We actually, he came on payroll this week. He has extensive background in assessing data, and hopefully he'll be able to help teachers become better teachers, principals become better principals with respect to assessing data and improving instructional techniques. I think he's with us. We had, Kevin, stand, please. Well, first of all, welcome, Kevin.
Welcome.
We actually met this morning, Mr. Oden himself, principals from various groups, and some central staff that started, you know, his position going to evolve into what we most need him to do and where he can be most beneficial. And we're really encouraged by how he might help this system.
Well, thank you. Welcome, Kevin. I think that's a really good move to take advantage of this enormous amount of data that we have now about assessment and use it to help teachers get better.
I think it's pretty interesting, Mr. or Dr. Burns. What, 35% of the teacher evaluation next year will be related to test scores, 15% principal observation. So teachers are going to want to be able to become better teachers because of those mandates. I'd say this, our teachers already have enormous pride and want to be good teachers, but they need, they're going to need help, and I think they'll appreciate what he can offer.
Great. Number seven?
We have a spotlight on education night, Homer Pitter Campus School. And Homer Pitter Math Program is being used to increase students' achievement as well as meet their individual needs on the Tennessee State Standards in Mathematics. So whomever's leading the group, would you please, that's Dr. Bridgman. Hello, Dr. Bridgman. While she's coming up there, I think we've got some good report, good news report on campus school gains, don't we, Mr. Oden? You want to say something real quick before she takes as much as you can?
Very incredible.
Well, I'll say, boy, you guys really making tremendous strides and tremendous gains. Thank you, Dr. Bridgman, and your staff.
Absolutely. And that's where this IXL math program comes in. Last year was my first year at campus school, and I immediately began looking at a plethora of data on our students so that I could make sure I was the best instructional leader that I could be. During our professional learning community team meetings, the upper grade teachers and I, we began seeing a disconnect between student aptitude and their actual test results. So we started to delve a little deeper and try to figure out what we could do. We found that we can implement a number of instructional strategies, but in some cases we were getting the same result. What we finally realized was the fact, especially in the upper grades, was if we did not work on students' attitude toward math and their self-esteem about math, then we were going to get the same results. As students get older, you guys know, as they get older and they've never been successful at math, if math is, if has always been a challenge to them, then the teacher stands up, the teacher can offer manipulative, the teacher can work with them in a small group, but a lot of times you've got to get past their, that negative attitude or that low self-esteem. The IXL, the IXL math program, we found out about that last year. We tried to take pride in using a lot of research-based strategies, and a lot of my teachers began to look at this program, and we said, we're going to try in particular classes and see if we see any type of change in those two areas, students' attitude and their self-esteem. Mrs. Templeton, you're going to hear from her. She is one of the teachers, she was fifth grade last year, and she used this on a consistent basis with her students. She would make sure that she used it throughout the school day. She would assign different standards for students to practice, practice on at home. She would communicate with parents, let them know what the students would learn. And her, her gains were across the board. She added value to students in every ability level. Now, is it all attributed to this program? We can't say. But what we saw was the fact that students would go home after working on some of the standards, and this program is totally tied to the Tennessee State Standards. They would go home, their parents would be actively involved with them, each student was actively engaged, and they will start to work on particular skills that will be covered in the classroom. The parents could begin to see their children's strengths and their areas to strengthen. They would sometimes sit and also help their kids and work on the programs alongside them. The students receive immediate, immediate feedback. They can generate their own reports so that they can see, wow, I am improving. And that, that's where the area of self-esteem would really start to boost in their attitude. One, one aha moment that we had was when students would come in and the teachers would have their standards posted for the entire grading period, and students would go ahead. They would know that their teacher would cover another standard the next week, and these students started to jump ahead and start practicing some of those skills. Now, what's incredible about that, students who had a negative attitude toward math, did not feel good, was not confident, now they felt so confident that they wanted to get a head start. And so when the teacher introduced that skill, they felt that they were a step ahead. So the program has absolutely, we feel it's been a positive at campus school. We have some students here that you're going to hear from, we may have to lift one of them up, but we wanted you to hear from them as, as far as how they feel about the program. We know that in this age of technology, that we're competing with students who are used to having iPods, they have these games that we as parents have to always purchase. So we have to integrate technology, we have to keep them engaged, and they want immediate feedback. If they're doing any type of video game, they know immediately how well they're scoring. So this is, this is another area in which campus school has been working, bringing in technology and meeting the needs of our students, differentiating. Again, as I mentioned with Mrs. Templeton, we wanted to make sure that no matter where the students came in, that we added value to how they were performing. And we felt that we're on our way, and we're going to continue to try to make sure we meet the needs of our students.
I'm Maya Bridgman. IXL helps me do math. After every math, you receive a gold medal. You see how many minutes and seconds you do and also see how many you got correct. I like technology, and I rather do computer than math, than paperwork. My favorites are time and money. Kids will enjoy IXL.
Hi, my name is Olivia Perry, and I'm here to talk about IXL. I love the IXL program. It has every skill we do in class. When you complete a skill, you would get virtual prizes and a gold medal. IXL makes me feel super confident in math. I feel like I know more every time than I did last, the last time I did it. My favorite skills in IXL are rounding money and multiplication. This is why I love IXL. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Carolyn Thomas. I'm here to talk about IXL. IXL is a great program because I have learned things I had no idea about, and if I need to go down a level because I'm bad in math, I can do that. And if I am doing great in a level, I can, I can go up a level and learn more. And IXL also follows all the standards too. So that is how I think IXL is a great program, and I also get lots of confidence in me. I'm done now.
As a parent, I want to just say that this is a wonderful learning tool for my two boys. They get home in the afternoon, and they truly enjoy this program. There's no hassles with homework. They're anxious to get on this program, and I've seen a lot of quick growth in their math skills. Some of the benefits that I see as a parent are that each child is able to work at his or her own level and pace. The activities are standards-based. The, my boys can track their own progress and scores and the amount of time that they've spent on each skill. As they master a skill, they increase in difficulty, so that's good. It really challenges them. I love the fact that the students get immediate feedback. So if they miss a problem, they receive an explanation right then, which I think is real important, rather than waiting until, you know, a day or two later after a paper has been graded. They, they find out right away, and then they can make corrections. They show them, it shows them how to make corrections. As a child completes and masters a skill, they get an immediate picture reward, and this reinforcement really keeps my children engaged in the activities. And then the classroom teacher can easily monitor what's going on from her computer, so I think that's great. I love it because my boys have both set some personal goals. My oldest, super competitive son wants to learn the skills ahead of time before his teacher teaches them, so he's ready. You know, when she teaches them, he feels like he's ahead of the game. And he also wants to get the most time logged in, in his class. And then my younger son just likes to get as many prizes as he can, you know, during his session at night. So we're just real pleased. This is a wonderful learning opportunity, so we're very pleased with all the progress we've seen at campus school and the, just the, just to see our children grow by leaps and bounds. Thank you.
As another parent, I'd like to talk a little bit about IXL and keep it real in terms of the homework triage that happens at my house. I have a seventh grader, he has homework. I have my fourth grader who has homework, homework, and a 19-month-old who needs to be managed. So thankfully, Ms. Templeton sends an email during the day, and I see what needs to take place when we get home with terms, in terms of IXL. So I already know what skills we're going to work on. When I get home, I talk to my daughter, and I say, you need to work on such and such skills, and she runs right to the computer. There's no lobbying, there's no enticement. She's very excited. And I hear her on the computer talking back, oh, I got that. Oh, this is great. Oh. I haven't run across a program that gives that immediate feedback and the, the interesting pictures, the, the prizes in a way that interfaces, I guess, with the child at his or her level. We, we get a lot of things on the internet. We really are trying to, to use technology at home, parents find it. But this IXL is different. I, I haven't been able to put my finger on what the, the gentle enticement of it is, but it is good. So that's my comment about IXL at our house and homework triage.
Finally, Mrs. Templeton is going to come, and we have parent-teacher conferences tonight, so only one teacher can get away. The rest of the teachers are speaking with parents and going over student, student growth and their results. I do want to emphasize that last year we piloted this, but this year we have purchased a site license, so each and every student at campus school from kindergarten to sixth grade uses this program. Our teachers work extensively with it, and we're in the process of coming up with a school-wide incentive program. The program is, for us, for 276 students, was about maybe 11, $1,100 to $1,500. But of course, thanks to, thanks to our wonderful parents and supportive parents, typically if we have a need, then they're going to help us to fund that need.
Well, one of the best things I did as an educator last year was find this program. We're always looking for research-based programs, best practices at campus school, and Dr. Bridgman's the one who actually told me about the program. So I went in, signed up, got a free trial period, and it was in the spring, and it didn't last very long. So when it ran out, my kids were devastated. They would come in, as soon as we started the program, the children would get on, and we would, I would email the parents, the standards we were doing, and they would go home, and they would come back the next morning. The first thing they would say to me is, and they're saying it this year, will you pull IXL up on the computer? And I'm like, well, sure, why don't you pull it up? Because I want to see who had the most hours, the longest time, and how many minutes we have and hours we have as a class. So every day, Mateen is the one who reminds me to get that up, and, and they're a little competitive. I know one teacher has a chart up, and every day she does her top five for the time that they've spent in math. I'm proud to say, my students, we got this program up and going probably mid-August. As of last week, my class, 25 children, had completed over 45,000 math problems outside of, in the classroom. This was during our technology time at home, and as of today, they had 106 cumulative hours above and beyond. So we are definitely excelling in math. As a teacher, I've seen excitement grow in the classroom because we're no longer doing just textbook pencil-paper math. We're moving into that 21st century technology, using computers to learn our standards and to practice our skills, to differentiate our instruction. Many of my children need remediation in some areas, so they will drop down to third grade. They, I've taught them how to do that. Many of my children need enrichment, so they move forward. The other day, a group of my boys came up to me and said, did you know that in eighth grade, they do charts and graphs? I said, yeah. They said, well, I'm going to that today on the IXL program. I'm going to do eighth grade math. I said, you just go for it. And they did, because they were so excited to see that continuing the learning of what we're doing and the foundational learning. My parents are more involved, the parents know what's going on because we communicate about the progress of the students. So I love this program. I thank Dr. Bridgman for bringing it to our school, and I think our achievement shows that using this technology in math has improved our attitudes, our love of math, and our progress in math.
Okay, finally, I just, this is kind of going to another subject. Dr. Burns mentioned we have new windows, and I don't, it's like Christmas at campus school. Before I was there, I know there were, there was an agreement about renovations, and we came back from fall break, and we had these beautiful new windows, and we don't, we just smile all the time. They're beautiful. So I encourage any school board member to come out and see these windows. We want you to know that we sincerely appreciate you guys taking the time and taking the effort and just putting aside over $300,000 so that we can continue to have renovations. We're not a new school. We know that the, the items that we have there, the building structure's been around since 1929, but we absolutely appreciate your commitment to, whenever you're going to build a new school, that you don't forget about those older schools. I have our students, and we have parents, if you guys will stand, we came out because we wanted you to know at campus school that we do appreciate what you are doing for us. We appreciate every single dime you're putting into our school, and feel free to continue to put more funding into our schools. You know, we have our columns, we have our plumbing, we have our front steps, that's, that's in the, the next line item, hopefully soon to be renovated. But we wanted to let you know, we appreciate you, and our students have made cards to you, school board members, Mr. Gill, our superintendent, Mr. Clardy, who comes over there and, you know, has headed all this up, and he's always just comes and just has a wonderful smile, and our money man, Jeff Senfick. We include you too. So we wanted to give that back. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for helping.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bridgman, Ms. Templeton, parents, especially kids. Appreciate you all coming out. We have put a lot of money into campus school, and we have more yet that we're going to put in, so we're, we're committed to finishing the job over there. Very proud of what you're doing. If you all want to slip out at this moment, we will not be offended. In fact, we'll give you a few seconds to do that. But otherwise, you're welcome to stay and for the rest of the meeting. But thanks for coming out. Okay, we're ready for visitors. Let me just, first of all, we welcome visitors. Glad that you all are here tonight. We do have a few ground rules, though. First of all, we will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. I've got a little stopwatch here that'll help me, I'll give you a few seconds to finish a sentence that you might be in the middle of, but other than that, you'll need to confine yourself to three minutes. When you first come up, if you'll say your name, we would appreciate that. And, and then we also ask that you not make any personal attacks. You're welcome to talk about any school policy, any decision, pretty much anything, but we won't have personal invictive of any sort. So I do ask you to abide by that. But otherwise, you're welcome, and we're looking forward to hearing what you have to say. Traditionally, we don't get into back and forth during these comments. I think, Mr. Gill, after the end of all the comments, might make the comment himself, probably a board member or two. So that's how we'll proceed, okay? So first up, we have Ms. Ann Moon. If you'll come forward to the podium, Ms. Moon? Okay. I think she's here.
Yes, she is.
She is here? I'm sorry. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Should I go ahead and start?
Yes, ma'am, please start.
Okay. First, I'd like to say that I appreciate this opportunity to address the school board. I have had two students at Laverne, one currently at Laverne, and I am aware of Dr. Ash's past accolades and how good that he did at the middle school. I am somewhat concerned, as a parent, that this is not being transferred to the high school mentality. Things such as the timeout chairs that are in school, whether or not they're called that, that's what the children refer to them as. These are not children anymore. These are people that are, some of them already in the workforce or preparing to go into the workforce. That is, is not assisting them in being able to handle things in an adult manner. The inability to be able to reach the principal when there are issues involved is also, I guess as parents, we're kind of used to being able to have emails or telephone calls returned to us if there's a problem, and I personally am not receiving that, and I spoke to other parents who are not receiving that. I understand, again, what a wonderful job that he did there, but I'm not sure that this is being transferred to our children. When there's, I've chosen one out of three items to, to give a little bit more information on, and that was the signup for school this year. All the children, their parents, their siblings, the line prior to even opening the doors stretched clear across the school and down into the parking lot to be able to get all of those people into the gymnasium. This was not really a safe environment. A lot of people got in there. When we got in there, and these may seem trivial individually, but as a whole, they do speak to some issues. The signs for where you were to go, you had, I believe it was eight boxes that you needed to have checked. The signs were underneath the bottom of the table. They were not put up high enough that anybody could see them. The lines turned into mass, just a sea of people. You didn't know what line you were in, what line you were supposed to be in. We were supposed to get initials for each person from each station to be able to do that. It's, I'm sure that he's a wonderful person. I have tried many times, left messages and everything else, but I have never been able to speak with him directly.
Will you wrap up, Ms. Moon?
So I, I just, there are quite a few issues more than what I can do just in this short period of time. I'm sure that the school board is doing their best, but basically, there needs to be some things looked at. These are not small children. These are people that are going out into the adult world. It is demoralizing the students and the teachers, and the mantle of power, I know, is very heavy, but the school board's responsibility is to our children. And I appreciate it. You could do your job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Kim Boyd Hughes? Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
First, I'd like to say thank you to the board and all of the people who work so hard for our county. This is a county that I have been in for quite some time now and have had the fortune of working under four different principals at this time for Rutherford County. And I want you all to know that me standing up here before you is very difficult for me. It has taken a lot of thought for me. It has also taken a lot of discussion at my home between my husband and myself because by standing here, I realize the position that I'm putting myself in. I'm putting myself in. But I feel, as an educator here in this county, because I do love Laverne so much and I love the faculty there, and I love, absolutely love, our kids. So the next thing that I say to you, I'd like for you to listen with open ears, please, and understand the courage, seriously, that it's taking for me right now, I'm sure you can hear it in my voice. I want to let each of you know that I do not trust any of you. I do not want to be here, I was made to be here. Do any of you really know anyone that would leave a good job to come here? You will do what I tell you to do, it doesn't matter whether you like it or not, if you don't like it, you can get off the bus. I don't expect any of you to trust me. Now, I'd like to ask all of you here how that made you feel, because these are things that were said to my faculty, our faculty at Laverne, my fellow teachers that I've worked with for several years now, and that was a stab to, literally to me, because I really do love what I do. This was the tone that was set, and these are direct quotes from our administration, on the very first optional day of school. Our cafeteria was full of teachers eager, excited, new teachers and old teachers, and no matter what anybody said, oh, the old teachers don't want to do what we want, don't want to get on board, that's not true. There are some people who don't like change, but there were a lot of us who were very open to the opportunity of change. We were open to the opportunity of all these great things that we had heard were gonna come forward into our school. We were open to get on board and work hard to try to make those things work, but when you start a school year like that, that sets a very negative tone for those people that you want to get behind you and help you push these great programs that you're thinking about doing.
Will you wrap up, please?
Yes, sir. I just want to say that I came here to speak on behalf of all the teachers that are afraid to step forward, I understand the position I'm putting myself in, but I will say I have read the comments that, or the complaints, or the, I don't know what the right word is, the things that have been filed, and there is truth in all of those.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
I'm Tracy Stoughton, and I have two sons at LHS, and I will start out by saying, respect is something that is earned, it's not just given, you can say yes, sir, no, sir, but inside that does not mean I respect you. Mr. Freitag's complaint has been dismissed, Mr. Ash blatantly called him out in front of his student unprofessional, saying that he was not complying with the county guidelines and putting our children in harm's way, and of course, that has not been substantiated, but his complaint has been dismissed, and I'm sure it's a technicality which seems to be the rest of where all these complaints have been swept under the rug. Mr. Freitag is here for the children. If you are any parent that's involved in the band, you know what it takes to get on that field and how exhausting it is for these kids and also to continue to go to school. Mr. Freitag would never harm them, he has the utmost respect from his kids. If he is wrong, he'll drop and give him 20. If those kids are wrong, they drop and give him 20, and they don't complain about it, they do it, they respect the man, they would do anything for him. My son who's in the band does not want to be at LHS if Mr. Freitag isn't there, he does not want to continue there. That is the highest respect, I think, that you can say to somebody. Mr. Freitag does not need to be working, and I think you guys need to understand that. Mr. Ash has shown very unprofessional behavior, he has cussed in front of the students, he's actually manhandled by grabbing them by the shoulders, and in your policy, it states that cussing can be disciplined, but yet, Mr. Ash is allowed to cuss out the students. Mr. Ash sets himself apart from us, he does not sit with us during the football games, but the other teachers do, Mr. Ash sits down with his little group at the end of the football field, I'm not sure if he's trying to catch a field goal, hoping that one will happen, I don't know, but he is not there amongst us like Mr. Holliday was in the community, sitting up there in the stand with us on Friday night. The fire drill, the O-Hall in LHS, had it been a true disaster, they would have died because he did not evacuate the O-Hall. The O-Hall is the freshman hall, these are new students, they are not familiar with the building, they are not familiar with the drills, but yet, Ash thought it was okay to go ahead and stop the drill, let's not continue, that's not acceptable. When Ash has his staff, we've got a freshman principal, I wanted to speak with one of the teachers.
Will you wrap up, please, ma'am?
I asked for the meeting, I was not granted the meeting with the teacher, and they did not know a lot of things that I wanted to talk about. You guys need to pay attention, you need to read these complaints and not sweep them under the rug, you need to step up.
I brought the board members, something that I didn't know whether you had or not.
Okay, thank you.
In each one of those folders, you'll find a copy of my speech if you get lost.
Okay.
Members of the Rutherford County Board of Education, Director Gill, my name is Sue Kane, retired Laverne High School teacher, concerned citizen, taxpayer, and voter in Rutherford County. Take a quick look at what's happened at Laverne High School since February 2010. This nightmare at Laverne High School did not have to happen. If Mr. Gill had not wanted to put Mr. Ash in as the high school principal, it would not have occurred. But first of all, Mr. Melvin Daniels didn't deserve to be treated the way he was. I worked for Mr. Daniels before I retired, he cared for his faculty and he cared for his students. It's true that we felt like one big family. When he came to be principal at Laverne High School, he, with input from his administrators and his faculty, developed some programs that he thought would help at Laverne High School. Everything he presented to Mr. Gill, at least we were told this, was turned down flat. No, can't do that, cost too much money. But we didn't know what to think. I understand that Mr. Ash has told his faculty that he's been given full authority to do whatever he wants to at Laverne High School. If that's true, then he's taken Mr. Gill at his word, but I'm puzzled. If Mr. Ash wanted everybody to be on board and work smoothly with each other this year, I have to wonder why he introduced the folks that came with him from Laverne Middle, he had them stand up in front of the faculty and introduced them as faculty enemies, they're gonna be watching everything you do and they're gonna report back to me. Now, I'm sorry, as a human being, if somebody says that when they introduce somebody to me, that's gonna make me wonder what that person's like. It's gonna make it hard for the veterans that have been there for years and the newcomers to share with each other. The new folks are probably good folks, but that didn't set the right tone. I'm also puzzled about something else. Did Mr. Gill really mean for Mr. Ash to blatantly violate Rutherford County School Board policies regarding grades and homework? Because the Rutherford County School Board Policy 4.6003 states that in retaining or promoting a student, homework grades are to be used in determining the student's grade. Rutherford County School Board Policy 4.600 states that grades at the end of each six weeks will be determined from daily work, homework, written assignments, and tests. Apparently, the Rutherford County School Board believes that homework is essential, to be included as a part of a student's overall grade and of general value to the student's overall learning extension of concepts, not as extra credit for those who chose to do the work.
We have the rest of your speech here, I'll certainly read it.
I've got about four more sentences.
Okay. Go right ahead, then.
If you'll let me do this last paragraph.
I will.
It'll be fine, because you've got the rest of my speech in your folder.
Yes, ma'am.
These complaints and grievances filed at Laverne High School are not based on opinion. How the school should be operated is not opinion. There've been serious violations of the Tennessee Code Annotated, Tennessee State Board of Education Rules and Regulations, Tennessee Code of Ethics and the Tennessee Attendants Accountability Standards, and that's not even counting the Rutherford County Board of Education policy. Each of these violations is referred to in the Tennessee Tenure Law, which you have a copy of, TCA 495501, as grounds for discipline and/or termination, as these violations constitute insubordination, and I've given you a definition of insubordination. These complaints and grievances, most importantly, were filed on behalf of the students at Laverne High School. The teachers that did this recognize that many rules, regulations, and policies are being violated that negatively impact on the quality of education the students get. How can this board and the director continue to ignore these egregious violations and take no action? Where do the students fit into the picture? Must we knowingly admit to them, the students and their families, that this body finds it acceptable for there to be blatant non-adherence to the required rules, regulations, and policy? This responsibility will it be if the students at Laverne don't live up to what you want them to and don't do well? Teachers at Laverne High School are not crybabies, I've worked with a lot of them, and the students at Laverne High School obviously need your help, or it's your responsibility, will you help them?
Thank you, Ms. Kane.
I'm currently employed at Laverne High School as one of the school counselors, and tonight, I'm gonna be reading a letter on behalf of Ms. Amy Penny, who could not be here. She has been employed at Laverne High School for many years as both the graduation coach and as a math teacher. Laverne High School is the toughest school in the county to run, it has a population of over 2,000 students in which the majority qualify for free and reduced lunch programs. I understand that the parents of the good kids are upset, have they sat and thought about our current economical situation even for a second? Maybe they have. I'm not here to judge, but only shed light on the facts. Many kids at LHS come from broken homes in which the parents have just checked out of their lives. It has been our job as staff members, faculty, and administration at LHS to instill that education is important, it truly is their future. Current graduates today are faced with tough competition in the job market. Without a high school diploma, our kids are left in the dust with nowhere to turn but the cycle of poverty. I've seen it firsthand as the graduation coach at LHS. I've visited many homes over the past few years in hopes of encouraging students to return to school so that they may have a future. If they don't come to school, who pays for it? Taxpayers. We pay for the uneducated. Do you want to keep spending your tax dollars on someone because they chose to drop out of high school and now rely on the welfare and the money of taxpayers? So here we are in turmoil because a new administration who feels that every child can learn and if given that chance, can be successful, and the rest of the population who have lost hope in LHS. This whole debate boils down to what you believe, do you really feel that every child can learn? If so, then give this new administration the chance to prove it. It has nothing to do with test scores, but everything to do with heart. A true teacher at heart will do anything it takes to make sure a child is learning and prepared for the future if given the opportunity. Quit blaming the school system and look at society as a whole, we need to work together to make a positive impact on our students. Quit blaming and start working, our future depends on the kids we impact today.
Thank you. Ms. Brenda Morris. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to each of you tonight. I am Brenda Morris, and this is my 20th year teaching at Laverne High School. I am a teacher, a coach, and a department head. I speak tonight in support of Mr. Dirk Ash. We live in a time of change, and I have had the opportunity to work with several different principals over the years. I feel you picked the best man for the job. Mr. Ash deserves our loyalty. Mr. Ash held an orientation for any teacher and staff member that chose to attend in July. He presented his plan and he gave us the tools that we needed to begin the school year. What I remember most are these words, he said, "Do your job, pay attention to detail, and you will be fine." During the first few weeks of school, I was supervising in the hallway, and throughout the last few weeks as well, we continued to supervise, and I visually saw the dress code being enforced, the students getting into class on time, and I said out loud, and faculty members heard me, "This is a blessing." Hallways are being supervised before, during, and after every class period. His discipline procedures have clearly been presented to all faculty members. If we do our paperwork, the administration takes care of the rest. In my department, we team teach, and a first-year teacher asked me this question, "How does this year compare to previous years that you've been teaching, Coach Morris?" And I said, "We spend less time on discipline and more time with students actively learning and participating in class." Mr. Ash has also put into motion the benchmark testing. If my evaluation in the future is going to be based on 35% of the school-wide test scores, then there's no better place to teach than at Laverne High School. These results will be evident, we are already seeing student success. In previous years, a former principal has given me the opportunity to substitute as an assistant principal. I decided that that might not be the job for me. Under Mr. Ash's direction, through his chain of command, I am seriously considering completing the EDS program now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Marie Forbus.
Hi. My daughter Jessie, she's in the marching band, and she wrote a letter, I promised her I would read it for y'all, so whenever you hear me say "I," it's her. "I am a senior at Laverne High School, and I have never been disciplined nor have I ever been in trouble. I am not in any gang nor have been approached by any gang member at the school. When I found out, when I, oops, I'm sorry, what I found at my school was not violence, gangs, and indifference to education, I found passion, love for education, and love for each other. Everyone at this high school is close to each other, whether everyone realizes it or not, thanks to Mr. Daniels. This school not, I'm so nervous, this school not just taught science, English, math, or foreign languages, but integrity, love, and passion. The same integrity, love, and passion is why I write this letter to you today. I am not only an LHS senior, but I'm also a proud band kid. Mr. Freitag and the director of bands at Laverne always gives us support for what we do, what we want to do, even if he has nothing to do with music, even if it has nothing to do with music. He has helped countless people earn scholarships to colleges and has prepared his students well. He teaches us every day to never do less than your best. He would tell us to approach every class and every course like you are going to earn a master's degree in that class. When you're in math class, you're a mathematician, when you're in biology, you're a biologist, when you're in a music course, you're a musician. Always give it your all and nothing less. Mr. Freitag is a teacher that doesn't..." Everyone who joined this nationally-ranked band knew there was a price to pay for joining, hard work, and dedication. This is something that is lacking in the rest of the school. I have friends who literally sleep in the classes and score hundreds in their classes. As far as the tests go, they're too easy. I could train a monkey to bubble in and see like we have to. Teachers are allowing more students good grades despite their lack of participation and knowledge of the class, just so they won't be fired. Some teachers who refuse to do that fear that Ash will fire them because a couple of students fail the class. I am, like many others, a hard-working student, but this is the easiest year of my entire life. All I need to know is how to spell my name and how to bubble in the answers on a test. And I can tell you honestly, I don't know how some of the teachers teach. They never have time to do so. We have forty-five minutes in each class on Monday, Thursday, and Friday to take roll, start up class, and then to listen to announcements for the rest of the class. I want my education. I want to learn. This school is hardly a learning environment for me. I feel like I am in a jail. We are dismissed from class to our buses, cars, extracurricular activities at the end of the day by the intercom. Teachers have to block off and barricade hallways from us.
Will you wrap up, Ms. Forbus?
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Okay. Basically, they're interrupted, okay? At the beginning of the day, they go to their classrooms, and then somebody comes to the classroom, tells them to stand up to make sure they're in dress code. I'm sure a teacher can do that that is in the classroom. And then there's constant interruptions over the intercom, like yesterday.
If you want to leave a copy of the letter with Ms. Michaels, she'll make sure that we get it, and we can get the rest of it that way.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Ms. Lori Corbett. Welcome.
I'm here on behalf of my daughter Ashley. My name is Lori Corbett. She is a freshman at the high school this year. I had a very unfortunate opportunity to meet Mr. Ash on the very next-to-last day of her last year at Laverne Middle School. I'm talking about a child who has been a model student from kindergarten. Have I ever, not once, had any complaints from a teacher. She has made straight A's for the most part. Anytime I would go to parent-teacher meetings, they would look at me and say, "Why are you here?" I wish I had twenty-five Ashleys in my class. I get a call from my daughter one day, cowering in the bathroom at the Laverne Middle School. Mr. Ash threw her in in-school suspension on the last day of class, or the next-to-last day of school, based on pretty much a misunderstanding of what some events unfolded. She was hysterical. I get there only to find out that he berated her to the point to where she was sobbing, standing in the front office. I was at work when I get this call, so you can imagine, I am in shock, thinking, "What in the world has she done that is very out of character for Ashley to get into any trouble, much less something that would warrant in-school suspension?" I get there, and Ms. Michelle, who I see seated behind me, who I believe knows Ashley well enough to know that that's not anything that Ashley would have ever done. I get into the front office, and I am met by Mr. Ash and his arrogant attitude to tell me that my daughter is in in-school suspension. We had some words, obviously, but, you know, I felt that I was going to be the better person and not give him the opportunity to bait me into a confrontation in front of the entire front office. You know, at first, before that happened, I was, I felt pretty good about him going to the high school. I had only heard what was going on. I certainly didn't know, because I didn't have any children that had been in the high school. After this confrontation, my husband and I seriously thought about putting her in a private school, because I did not want her under an administration that would treat a child that way. Disrespect? I mean, I, go on. I won't. I won't go into any more details. I contacted Mr. Gill. I emailed the entire school board, and pretty much nothing was done. I was basically told, and I have the email in my purse-
Will you wrap up, please, ma'am?
-that Mr. Ash's version of this story was completely different from mine, and that his people in the front office would back him up. Sure, they would. But like all these other parents, and even this brave teacher that spoke, I want Laverne High School to be the best it can be, but in my opinion, that's not going to happen until somebody steps up and makes it clear to Mr. Ash, "You cannot treat these parents, teachers, and students with such total disrespect. That's not how you," I think somebody said, "You earn it, you're not, you know, you can't demand respect from anybody." And he lost my respect.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
And I would like to leave this with somebody.
Ms. Michael. Yeah.
Welcome. Good evening. I teach advanced honors economics at Laverne High School, and I feel like I have a very unique perspective. I worked at Laverne Middle School for two years. I then had a child, and stayed home with him, and then came back to work at Laverne High School. When I interviewed with the previous administration, I specifically said, "What is the discipline plan?" I was assured there was a discipline plan. Everything's great. I get there, and it is complete chaos. I could not believe it. Teachers have been able to do whatever, whenever, for the past five years, and they're quite in shock. Mr. Ash is very clear on his expectations, and they're very high, as they should be. Could some things be said better? Yes. But I am not perfect. There's no administration that is perfect, and no one in this room is perfect. I can tell you, when I was at Laverne Middle School, I was reprimanded on more than one occasion, and it was completely appropriate and professional, because, you know, everybody makes mistakes, all right? I believe that Mr. Ash truly wants students to be successful, and I really feel that some teachers have not given him a chance, and I believe that the changes he is making have already made LHS a better school. And I have to say about, somebody mentioned a blue light special. The administration actually finds humor in it, and they are able to admit when something did not go as planned. And I remember the first day I saw Ms. Conifey-Marlin when she started, and she was like, "Wow, there's a lot of changes that need to be made." And I feel like we are on a very good start, making LHS a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pamela Jones.
I'm Pam Jones. I teach criminal justice, forensic science at Laverne High School, and also serve as the REA representative for that building. And I am the signer on the grievances and the complaints that you've all received and that have been so publicly shown in the Daily News Journal and on the TV and everywhere else. But I'm here to speak on behalf of the teachers and the students at Laverne High School. In the past few weeks, there have been several complaints and grievances filed with this school board. It is the belief of the Rutherford Education Association and the teachers involved that the complaints and grievances are not being investigated thoroughly and properly. I will begin with the grievance filed stating that teachers are asked to perform bus duty morning and afternoon on the same day, which is in violation of a negotiated agreement between the REA and the Rutherford County Board of Education. The contract states that teachers should have the option of performing bus duty before or after school on the same day, but they shall not be required to do so. In Mr. Ash's response to the filed grievance, he stated to Mr. Odom that Mr. Daniels, the previous principal, allowed the teachers to walk out at the same time the students left. I don't know how it's handled when a blatant falsehood is told during the course of an investigation, but that was not true. That was an incorrect statement given during the course of that investigation. Mr. Ash also stated, when asked if there were any teachers required to serve both morning and afternoon bus duty, and he responded, "Not unless they have asked to do so." I don't know of any teacher in here that volunteers for morning and afternoon bus duty. I personally have bus duty as a dean in the mornings from eight-ten to eight-thirty, have bus duty from three-thirty until three-forty-five when the last bus riders are called from my classroom. During my department's bus duty assignment, I performed bus duty from seven-forty-five to eight-ten, dean bus duty from eight-ten to eight-thirty, and afternoon bus duty from three-thirty to three-forty-five. Now, Mr. Ash may refer to this as dismissal time, which is semantics to me, because any time a student is being supervised by a teacher waiting for their bus number to be called, it's bus duty. They're not waiting for a plane, they're waiting for their bus, so I call it bus duty. And after all this information was presented, the finding was that there was no violation of the contract based upon the testimony and reading evidence provided. And that I find hard to believe. Another grievance that was filed, and I'm going to have to probably wrap this up, and I know that you guys all know that the complaints are all public record here at the board.
About thirty seconds, Ms. Jones.
Okay. A grievance also was filed regarding class size limits exceeding the maximum number of thirty-five students. Mr. Ash responded during the investigation that he was not aware of any teacher with more than thirty-five students at any time. He also stated that the three gym teachers were supervising approximately fifty students. On the same day that statement was made by Mr. Ash to Mr. Odom during the course of this investigation, I obtained a class roll from one of the gym teachers that had listed eighty-one students on their roll. I have a copy of that roll with those eighty-one students, which I've also already provided.
Will you wrap up? Anything you want to give Ms. Michael, so she can give copies to us?
I will. So again, there was false information being obtained during the course of that investigation. All of the complaints that have been filed, of those complaints that were also sent to the Daily News Journal prior to me receiving an actual response from the complaints, some of them were denied based on some type of a technicality of not meeting the requirement of the thirty-day timeframe, but not meeting that timeframe does not mean that the information that's contained in those complaints is not valid and that those events did not occur, and something needs to be done to rectify those situations for those teachers that are directly involved in those complaints. And as I wrap up, I would also like to make note of the Rutherford County Board of Education Policy five-point-eight-zero-two, which is the qualification and duties of the Director of Schools, and I would like to ask that Mr. Gill, under person administration in number four here that says "Holds meetings of teachers and other employees as necessary" for the discussion of matters concerning the welfare improvement of the schools, I would like to ask Mr. Gill to hold a meeting with the teachers of Laverne High School to discuss these concerns with them outside of this complaint procedure, so that maybe we can come to some type of resolution on those.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
First of all, we are taking notes, and there were some things that were said that I certainly intend to look into. I want to go on record saying, Mr. Ash didn't seek the job, he didn't apply for the job. I put him in Laverne High School. I put him there to fix what I considered becoming a bad, a really bad situation. I put him there in part because his previous, or largely due to his previous performance at Laverne Middle School, which was hovering around sixty-five or seventy percent free reduced population at a school that turned out remarkable results. Matter of fact, in two thousand, two thousand eight, out of six-hundred-and-thirty-three middle schools, Laverne Middle School ranked twelfth in the state in math, seventh in reading language arts, ninth in science, and seventy-ninth in social studies. The same year, Laverne High School was five-hundred-seventieth out of five-hundred-seventy-one in the state in algebra scores, one-seventy-four out of three-sixteen in biology, two-fifty-one out of three-sixteen in English, three-sixty out of three-sixty-six in physical science. With the various students that Dirk Ash was sending over from Laverne Middle School, clearly something was happening as we went from school A to school B, and it wasn't a good thing. The following year, out of six-hundred-and-twenty-seven middle schools, Laverne Middle was tenth in the state of Tennessee in value-added gains, third in reading language, sixth in science, fifteen in social studies. Laverne High School was two-oh-two, one-forty-eight, one-twenty-eight, one-thirty-five, eighty-eight, and two-thirty-eight out of three-hundred high schools. The next year was more of the same. Laverne graduation rate had plummeted to seventy-seven percent this year from eighty-seven percent the year before. The state expectation was for them to be at eighty-six-point-two percent, or nine percent below where they should be. So clearly, from our perspective down here, there were some things that needed fixing. What I'm perplexed about is that the six years that Dirk was the principal at Laverne Middle School, we'd never had a single complaint from a teacher, not one. Then, then all of us, then all of a sudden, we get an influx of complaints primarily from one person, who apparently was representing a group, and we investigate those complaints. But at the end of the day, and I'm going to address some of your concerns with Mr. Ash. First of all, I don't want anybody being a principal that's a bully, but I do want those folks getting results, and I think, given the chance, they will get results. I have no question. And I'm very much aware that there's been a culture change at Laverne High School. I personally think it's for the better. However, I don't want anybody bullying anybody. The only person I've talked to in the last four, five, six months about Laverne High School was Ms. Corbett called me, and I did look into her concerns. And since then, I haven't had a single phone call. Now, I have heard that there's a teacher down there that instructs the class how to blog on the D and J to criticize the principal, or passes out flyers at the football game to try to get people to come down here and criticize the principal. I mean, how unprofessional can we be? How disappointing that somebody would do that. I mean, we should all be on board with respect to trying to turn this school around, whether you do or don't like it. Again, I will look into the things that you've said tonight, but all you have to do is ride down Wolverine Trail. Look at the stadium, look at the hill, look at the building, and see, it's evident the change that's been there. Walk through that building. The whole school's been painted. I don't think there was a day from the day Mr. Ash and his team got the job that they weren't working on getting, on making Laverne High School better. Saturdays and Sundays, they gave them. Now, again, that'd rectify if there's some bullying taking place, and I want to address that if there is. But again, a guy has invested his heart and soul in it, and I think we owe him the opportunity to turn things around in lieu of finding reasons to criticize him. I guess it's a little like the glass is half-full or half-empty. Let's try to find some good things he's doing. Let's try to work on the things that perhaps you think we can work on, and we'll see if things get better. But I'm going to ask that you do that. Now, I listen to everybody out there, and I would appreciate if you put your hands down, because I'm not answering any questions. I'm just making my closing statement here. And if you, you know, if there's some things that you want to say, or if you want to call me, I'll be happy to take your calls. But he is a principal. I will support him until such time I discover he doesn't deserve to be supported, and I'm going to promise you, in two or three years, we're going to see some results at that school, positive results. And that's kind of where I want to leave it right there.
Thank you. Board members, comments? Ms. Blair?
It grieves me to have this conflict at one of our campuses. If we have conflict, then it's a distraction with instruction. And our priority, the main reason we're here, are for our students and to make sure they have the best environment and the best opportunities to learn. I'm going to accentuate the positives tonight. I've been on campus- I've been, I've been on campus, I've watched the children, excuse me, students, change classes, they're orderly, they're smiling, they're, they're talking. The building is cleaner than I've ever seen it, the grounds are the best that I've ever seen. And, and I'm hopeful tonight that the airing of all these issues, and with what you just said, Mr. Gill, that you're willing to, to listen to anybody, that we can put this aside and get back to the basics, which is educating our children. Because with the new standards we have, you know, across the board, we've all, we all have to be on the same team, and we all have to be on the same page. So, again, I implore you to, to, to use the key word that we've been using for the last several years, collaboration, communication, and let's get past this, and let's, again, like you said, make, make Laverne High School the very best we can, and let us have the opportunity to praise you for the good work that you're going to do and that you are doing. So, again, I, I beg you, let's get past this.
Other comments? Thank you, Wayne. Aaron?
For me, it's impressive to see the, the community in and around Laverne engaged in the process. I have been contacted by many of the teachers, some of whom spoke tonight, some who did not, and I've worked to encourage them. I have done everything I can to let them know that the board is aware and concerned about the issues that they're raising. I've spoken with Mr. Gill on several occasions, and I've tried to make myself extra present around the school. Met with Mr. Ash as well, and I feel comfortable with his commitment to the educational process. The educational process is the priority. Educating the students is the priority, and we have got to accomplish that goal. Mr. Ash has shown himself in the past to be able to accomplish that goal, and I feel that he'll be able to do that with this plan that he has in place. Along the way, there are places we can improve in communication. And I'm particularly concerned about profanity and physically touching a student that's been expressed tonight. We certainly want to look into that, and I'm confident that we will. There is a process by which this board puts in place so that we can accommodate these concerns and, and look into them. I have been given assurance by Mr. Gill's staff through the process that, that these things are being addressed. Please continue to raise them in accordance to the policies so that we can, so that we can work on them. I talked with Mr. Ash, and my final words with him were, can I continue to be a, a part of your success here? And he welcomed me as a part of that success, and I will continue to be a part of that success, and will continue to make it, make it better. So, please, keep contacting the board. Come back and tell us more as we continue to improve this, and we'll try and communicate back to you the, the things that we find out.
Thank you. Other comments? Tim?
Many here would know that I'm a past faculty member of Laverne High School. I spent five, the best five years of educational time that I had there, from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-three. So I've got skin in the game. I've still got blue shirts that say Laverne on them. And it, and I am concerned that, from this perspective, it's very clear we have a house divided. And a house divided can't, can't work as well as it needs to. Somewhere along the line, there has to be that unity brought back into the situation. There's passion, the young lady sitting in the back, very passionate. I know Brenda Morris well, she was on the faculty when I was there, she has passion. They have, they have different views of the same situation. And at, at some point in time, what I would encourage, because I know there is administration here, I would encourage that administration to find some way to bring unity to this faculty, whatever that takes. I, I also have great confidence in, in Mr. Ash's ability to, to lead a school, he's proven he can do that. I, I think now where the, where we are is we, we need to see that he has the ability to bring the school together and for the benefit of the kids. I asked a question Tuesday at the, at the work session, and that's really what it's all about. Are the kids at Laverne being serviced the way they need to be done? And when the, I've been there, I've been a teacher, I've been a school administrator, been a high school principal. It's, your job is tough enough when you're united, it becomes very difficult when you don't have that unity together. So I would encourage the administration of Laverne High School, do everything in your power to bring unity to that faculty, and, and at the same time, continue what I know are some good things that are happening there.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else? Let's take a minute or two. You all are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, which will be exciting, but if you want to slip out now, this will be the time. Thank you for coming.
(inaudible)
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 (inaudible) Number nine. Okay, number nine. Before we do that, Dr. Burns, we've got two distinguished guests in the back. Berford's River City School. We're Dennis Fournier and Butch Campbell are here with us tonight. Welcome, guys. Good to have you. Thanks for coming. Mr. Clardy has several follow-up status of previous board action items, and he'll just get you in the loop with respect to what's taking place construction-wise in the county. Oh, Dirk. Dirk?
First thing I wanted to do is just give you an update on Central Magnet School. Went over yesterday with a couple commissioners and walked through, and it is very nice. Contractor has finished up, and over fall break, we installed a backflow valve preventer over there, and we're finalizing pay applications at this time. Oakland High School annex, ed-pack units or HVAC, individual HVAC units shipped on the fifteenth, and once they arrive, maintenance will be installing those. Riverdale High School annex, the ed-packs are here, and we're scheduling those to install at this time.
Okay, Gary, I should know what an ed-pack is. Is it air-conditioned, the heating-air thing?
Yes, it's a heating-air condition. It's an individual unit that sits in a classroom, and some of them are self-contained, some of them hooked to the boiler and chiller to circulate the water through to heat or cool the room as needed.
Thank you.
Gary, they step up from what was there before, I hope?
Yes, they are. More efficient. That's the reason we're replacing them. They're actually in bad shape. Vern High School ed-pack units are installed, we installed thirty-six up there. Riverdale ROTC and van roof replacement are now complete, it's inspected, and it's good shape. And that's an area that we did not replace during the construction project we did down there with the classroom addition. McFadden School of Excellence renovation is completed. We have a closeout doc in three months, and we're processing the pay application. Gymnasium floor maintenance, we got a lot done over fall break. We did Walter Hill Elementary School, Wilson Elementary School, Blackman Middle School, and Siegel High School. The flooring contractor is in the process of sending ceiling Laverne High School, and I noticed that Central Magnet was finished yesterday. And at one time, we were using Capital Projects money to do these, and we would have to come in at the year and ask for that money, but now we on a program where we have it in our maintenance budget, and are taking care of those on a as-needed basis and schedule them yearly, a few of them, so that we don't end up with a big pile of them or end up having excess damage on them. Rutherford County ADA Port in place playground, we've made a lot of progress on these playgrounds. As you recall, this was our money. We completed eight schools, and we have several more we have just started. I want to show you some pictures of those. As you can see, the concrete goes in, or the gravel goes in, four inches of gravel, and we've placed four inches of concrete on that. And here's one that where the concrete's set up. Then we put three inches of this, excuse me, rubberized surface on top of that. Once that's completed, come back and put a colored surface of an half inch to three-quarters on top of that. And then we're also replacing some of equipment on the playground that has different events and challenges on it that are not, they can be physical and also mental stimulus. That's the view of that playground. I believe that's probably Stuart's brother. And this is one of the little students, very sweet student, that has experience, this is her first experience, so at Smyrna Elementary School, they decided that they would send Ms. Shirley Bell a book on that in her first day on the playground. It says Casey is rolling to the playground for the first time. She's still rolling, and she's happy about the new playground. She's having a ball there, you can tell. "I love it," says Casey. So she is, you know, these are very valuable.
Yeah, that's great.
Smyrna High School auditorium, we went in and replaced all the ceiling tile in the auditorium, and normally custodians replace ceiling tiles, but this is so high and all the seats are in the way, so we had to get a contractor in to do that. Laverne High School, we've done, accomplished a lot of work down there through planning with Mr. Ash. I think he, in March, once he realized that he was going down there, he started planning so, and he had a lot of money in his account down there, so we've shared a lot of costs. He paid for auditorium seats. We just got through the gym floor, just a number of things. I think I was looking down the list and had like a page and a half of things that he's accomplished with our help through the planning, and also he's, I wouldn't say shared costs, he's spent more of his money than we have our, but there's a major difference in that Here's one of the banks of there. Remember the ditch that we've had to clean out for years, and we've been working on it for four or five years? Well, we finally got in there and cleaned it out, and this is not complete, but we're gonna finish cleaning this up and sew it down so we can get in there with a mower and keep that cleaned out now.
I went by to visit, and it really looks good. Thank you very much. It's always been such a nice home.
Well, he, he bought the stone, and we did a work. We did a couple paving projects over fall break, one at Buchanan Elementary School, and also one at Rockville Elementary School. This is at Buchanan, that drive had gotten in such bad shape that we went in and replaced it. Rockville Elementary School, we went in and took the center island out so we could stack more cars in there and get them off of Highway ninety-nine, which has helped the situation out there considerably. Re-roofing project is probably seventy percent complete at Stewart'sboro Elementary School. And let me show you some pictures. A lot of these roofs were ballast and not adhered, they were only adhered at the joints. So, we're in the process, we take all of that, vacuum all the rock off of it, put down a recovery board, you can see it's dotted here, and then put the, fully adhere the membrane back to that recovery board, and then we get the weight off the roof also from all the stone up there.
What was the theory of putting the stone on the roofs?
Yeah. It just holds the.
Holds the membrane down?
Holds the membrane down to keep the wind from getting under it and blowing it away. And as I said, it was only sealed at the joints, fastened at the joints with screws, and then the next piece lapped over it. So you get rid of all that weight on your roof, you get a new membrane down, it's totally glued to the surface, and the pinnacle roofing just does an excellent, excellent job. You can see, that's a, that's an exceptional roofing job, just looking at it.
Mr. Clardy?
Yes, sir.
Do we still have contracted services inspect our roof?
We do. It's called consolidated roofing inspection, and the proprietor is Dan Sinclair, and he, he's right there with us twice a week. He looks at the roofs, he gives us a written report, sends us pictures. He also inspects all the new school that we do too. Just more pictures of the same, that's completed section. I showed these to just show you what a good job he's doing around the vents and those types of roof penetration. Campus school windows, I know you, some of you got a package, I'll just kind of read through these. I want to read you a couple of these very quickly. I want to read you a couple of these very quickly. Those kids over there are really appreciative. And although they're giving me credit in here, this is, you know, for everyone, everyone, the board, the county commission and everyone else has worked very hard to procure the funds to get this work done. And it's, we're closing in on it. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel and just hope it's not a train. It says, "Thank you, Mr. Gary Clardy from Alexandra Grace Kimbrough. You saved my best friend, Mary, from getting stung. We love our new windows." And I was reading through these. Their wasp undoubtedly was a major problem over here. Dear Mr. Gary Clardy, it's Cole from campus. Thanks for fixing these windows. Now the wasp won't come in. Never mind, I see a wasp.
Okay, he was kidding.
So we have, we just lack a little bit of work on the inside of the building that we finished, but they're ninety-five percent complete now. And I believe Mr. Kelly asked at the work session to bring forward the items that we lacked completing our agreement with the MTSU. And let me just give you a quick view of the windows here. As you can see, the ones below there have been replaced. And these are old pictures. We got all of this work done during fall break and we are ninety-eight percent complete now. I'll just run through them very quickly for you. These are all aluminum on the outside that have baked on paint on them. So they're very nice and wood on the inside. Here's some that are not wrapped but are installed. There's an inside view. And then the balance of work at the campus school, as you recall, we had the elevator addition, the new sprinkler system, the fire alarm system, stair code upgrade, ADA requirements in the first phase. And then we also priority two, we replaced the wiring electrical and replaced the HVAC. And we didn't have enough money to do the plumbing. So, and then priority four, we pulled the windows out and we've got a new carpet. So we also have that accomplished. So what we're lacking is replacing the plumbing, repairing the front steps and column, taking the old boiler chimney off, some toilet partitions, repair the brick and tuck point them on the exterior, tie the rear drain into the storm and what acoustical ceilings we can get in there. Because there's so much roughing stuff in ceiling now that it's virtually impossible to get a ceiling in there. And then exterior painting and ceiling. And we believe we're down to about a half a million dollars on completing the work over there. And it has to be completed by August of two thousand and twelve, which means that we have the rest of this school year, the summer, the next school year and that summer. So we're gonna need half a million dollars from somewhere. So just try to keep that in front of your mind.
Mr. Clardy, what, what's the nature of the deadline? Is that a goal or is that?
It's when we, campus school had, we have had an agreement with them for years for us to administer the school, furnished administration, teachers, that type of stuff. And there's, a few years ago, three, four years ago, they had discussed turning the school over maybe to the city or something. And the board felt like that we should continue with it. Well, in that deal, to renew that contract, we agreed to do all of these items and we prioritized them. And we have to have those completed by two thousand and twelve August to meet our end of the agreement.
Very good. Come a long way though.
Yeah.
Other questions, Mr. Clardy? As usual for that report. It's very important. We're ready for ten.
School approval compliance report. State Department of Education requires school systems to submit an annual school approval report indicating compliance with state rules and regulations and detailed plans to rectify any deficiencies. Assistant superintendents and principals have reviewed the requirements and determined that the Rutherford County Schools is in full compliance. Recommend that we, that you approve the Rutherford County Schools two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven school approval compliance report.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Eleven.
Dr. Burns, just for the viewers, understanding, we have a work session on Tuesday before the Thursday board meeting and most of this stuff, we've already had discussion on. Eleven, certification of compliance with Tennessee Code Annotated, Section forty-nine dash three dash three ten A for textbooks. Rutherford County Schools must submit an annual report stating that the superintendent, the chairman of the board of the LEA, which is a local education agency, certified of the Commissioner of Education, that all children enrolled in this LEA have been furnished all required textbooks as determined by the commissioner. And Rutherford County School Material Center supervisor states that all requested textbooks have been provided to the schools. Recommend that you approve the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven certification compliance ED twenty-one fifty-two report.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Twelve, or twelve.
Facilities. A, Oakland Middle School final change order. RG Anderson Construction has submitted the final change order for Oakland Middle School in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. This change order includes a final billing for items funded in the building program budget by the Rutherford County School Board and County Commission in an earlier action. Recommend that you approve the final change order to RG Anderson Construction on Oakland Middle School in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. Funds are available in the building program budget due to earlier action by the school, school board and county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Grant.
Second. Okay. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. B.
Whitworth and Cannon Middle School final change order. Robert Bisken Construction has submitted the final change order for the Whitworth and Cannon Middle School in the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars. This change order includes a final billing for items funded in the building program budget by the Rutherford County School Board and County Commission in an earlier action. Recommend that you approve the final change order to Robert Bisken Construction on Whitworth and Cannon Middle School in the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars. Funds are available in the building program budget due to earlier action by the Rutherford County School Board and County Commission.
So moved. I heard a motion. Was there a second? I dismissed it, Don. Thank you. Discussion.
Grant. Does this include all the landscaping and drainage? I know they were a little bit behind.
I assume so.
I haven't been out there lately, but they finished that?
They don't quite have it all finished, but we still have plenty of money in the bank. We're holding on. So this is basically paperwork to try to just get the job ready to close out. So when they are finished, we can pay them and move on.
But due to the drought, we've had a lot of failure on, not necessarily there, but a lot of places, you know, people sowing and stuff. Is that gonna be a problem?
Yeah, we have, over the years, as a matter of fact, four years ago, we just instituted a policy in the department that all of our schools are being completed at the hottest part of the year. So what we normally do is just put a little bit of landscaping around the front to dress it up for ribbon cutting. And then we hold off until the weather starts cooling. So that's the reason that it hasn't been completed to this point. But they have started to work on it now. So it makes it fall in there just about right. So we don't end up tying up a lot of personnel, watering plants and that type of stuff.
Aye. Don?
Yes, a question that I don't expect you to have an answer tonight. What about, how many change orders did we have on those middle schools? Was that, was it about the same as we were accustomed to? And how many dollars in change orders did we?
Those change orders amounted to about five to six hundred thousand dollars. And a lot of that was due to the earlier discussions that we had, that you all approved the funding for. Normally, we don't have to go through a city review. Where Laverne and Smyrna doesn't require us to, but Murfreesboro City did. So we ended up making some changes to the plans early on that costs money now. Normally, we would end up with a pile of money in the bank, the way we've managed things on most projects. But on these particular projects, because we're struggling with the funding early on, we cut everything down to the bone and just as tight as we could probably cut it when we came back to request more money. And we even used the contingency that was in the contract to reduce that amount. So we'll have very little money left in these two jobs once the dust settles.
Other questions?
C.
Do we vote on B, Joyce? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted.
Smyrna Property Dedications. Mr. Robert Mullins has requested dedication of one acre tract of property from the Rutherford County Board of Education to the town of Smyrna on the town's behalf. Property is at the corner of Weekly Street, Ena Springs Road West, the site of Smyrna Fire Hall One. The Fire Hall One property was dedicated from the board to the town of Smyrna recorded on May seventeenth, nineteen ninety-two. And the one acre tract that is requested is the balance of, the balance of that tract of land that was not needed at that time. Property will be used to relocate a building from the property to Smyrna Church Cross to make room for an expansion. Historic building that is to be relocated was used for a subscription school from the eighteen-seventies to nineteen oh nine, was also the first school in the town of Smyrna. Recommended to approve conveyance of the property consisting of approximately one acre of four hundred, at four hundred and one, Ena Springs Road West to the town of Smyrna subject to the provision that should the property ever cease to be utilized for a fire hall and/or site for historic subscription school building, property shall revert to the Rutherford County Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
And this does include the provision we talked about the other night. I see the recommendations been changed.
And I guess I wanted to talk about that. It really didn't hit home with me Tuesday night. But looking at this odd shape, you know, a disfigured L, I'm wondering if we could ever use it for anything. And in having, not being able to use it, maybe it's in our best interest, you know, just from the liability point, not to have it, just to give it to the city of Smyrna. Because I can't see us ever using it. And what do you, what do you think? I think you made this point, Donald, so.
My, my point was that we're giving you force purpose. And if it's not used for that purpose, if it's used for some other purpose, then the city of Smyrna could get financial gain from it. So instead of that financial gain going to the city of Smyrna, it should go to the Rutherford County taxpayers as a whole, since it's taxpayer, Rutherford County property. That, that was my line of thinking. Not necessarily from the standpoint of can we use it? Well, probably not. But can someone else use it? So therefore, we should be able to, as Rutherford County, be able to get that gain.
Other discussion. Grant?
I think it's a valid point that Donald made, but it's not gonna restrict us or put us in a liability juncture. Obviously, it would give us a safeguard if it, you know, wasn't done according to that. But we don't have any, any liability or any obligation to do anything on that. So I don't think that'll have an effect.
Well, your liability would be if anybody was ever hurt on that property.
But it, it's, it's just, it's a deed with a restriction on it. But that, I don't.
I'm not objecting. I agreed with Donald. I just.
Okay. I mean, we might get legal counsel. Maybe he'll satisfy you a little better.
I think he's satisfied. Other, other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. D.
Stewart's Creek Elementary Playground Addition. Mr. Zago, Principal Stewart's Creek Elementary has requested approval of a playground addition in his school consisting of several new pieces of equipment, borders and mulch. Total cost is forty thousand dollars. Will be constructed by Kid Zone, who's currently on bid with Rutherford County School Board. PTL will fund thirty thousand and remain ten thousand of company. Segal Foundation grant. All funds are receivable and available. We need a motion on, make a recommendation and a vote on that, Don.
I don't think so. Why don't we?
We just didn't have it. And I saw move, I moved that we do that, or I recommend that we do that.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Thirteen.
Building program amendments. First Amendment moves remaining funding for three projects back to either elementary or secondary funding for future projects. Elementary funds have been shared with Murfreesboro City Schools. Secondary funds are not shared. One thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars from Rockvale Middle School Project, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars from Brown's Chapel Elementary School Project, and a hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars from two thousand and seven repairs are being moved. The unshared eight hundred and sixty-one dollars will go to the design fees for Stewart's Creek High School and the shared one million sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars would be available for the next elementary school. The design fees for Stewart's Creek High School would be funded internally within the building program until the county goes to the bond market. Recommend that you amend a thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars from Rockvale Middle School Project, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars from Brown's Chapel Elementary School Project, and a hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars from two thousand and seven repairs, a total of one million sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars, with eight hundred and sixty-one dollars being moved to Stewart's Creek High School design fees and one million sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars being moved to the next elementary school.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm just glad we've got good people that can figure all this stuff out.
Me too.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. B.
Second Amendment cleans up budget funds in our, in four projects that are underway. No new funds are being added to these projects. The amendment just moves already budget funds in different line items for any project. Homer Fitter Campus School renovation, nine thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Oakland Middle School, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Whitworth and Cannon Middle School, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And Central Magnet School, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. And recommend that you amend the individual line items in the Homer Fitter Campus School renovation project, Oakland Middle School Project, where Buchanan Middle School Project and Central Magnet School Project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Get over.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Fourteen.
Appointment of disciplinary hearing authority pursuant to board policy and federal law. The board must appoint members to serve on the disciplinary hearing authority, DHA each year. DHA is responsible for conducting appeal hearings for students who have been suspended for more than ten days. I thought, I told Mr. Holliday the other day that principal has authority to spend up to ten days without any kind of appeal, period. A lot of times, you know, I'll get a call about a three-day suspension or something like that and I'll tell him that. But the fact is that legislature has given the principal that authority. So recommend that you approve one member from the following positions to be included on each DHA, disciplinary hearing authority, and administrator from the appropriate grade level, a school psychologist, school social worker, student service representative or instructional coordinator. And the chairman of the committee shall be the attendance supervisor or attendance teacher.
So moved. Second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Fifteen is our monthly policy manual review. Anybody have anything from your reading of that? You want to bring forward? Next month, I might take up some homework.
Poll quiz?
We might just do that. We need to move on. If you do have anything, please forward it to Angel, and we'll put that on the next policy meeting agenda. Sixteen.
Open, insurance update, open enrollment for healthcare and voluntary benefits is in progress. Employees were notified in September with payroll, stuffers, and a card mailed to each home addressed with additional, pardon me, with informational meeting dates. Packet of information, including enrollment guide, was distributed to each school, department site for all employees. Employees must log into the employee's system to review current benefits, submit their choices, and print a copy for their records.
We discussed this Tuesday, but any further questions, Grant?
I was gonna ask, any problems, only I know initially, it was, it was a lot of folks were kind of waiting around, but is, have they pretty well had the hundred percent, almost hundred percent participation?
Yes, sir, the number's progressing today as to those who have completed their enrollment.
Last one got it in the day, didn't they?
What time did you submit? Other, other discussion? On the insurance? General discussion, Wayne, did you?
I don't wanna do a commercial, but I've discovered something that you may all know about, but I did not until yesterday, that there is a service or services out there that can disconnect a child's or teenager's cellphone where it cannot receive calls except from their parents or numbers that the parents approve, nine-one-one, and they can call, but they can't receive any texts or any, or any phone calls while they're driving. And we have lost some students, you know, with that. And, and, and I'm not gonna publicly bring the company out, but I'm gonna send you some paperwork, Mr. Evans, in case a parent is interested in that kind of service. They could still call mom or dad with the engine running, or they could still call nine-one-one, but any other, other calls they could make. And I, I think that's an ingenious service to, to help keep our children alive, because they do, they do text and they do talk.
What letter does the company start with?
Eyes up. It's I-Z-U-P.
Anything else, Aaron?
Uh, I'm looking forward Saturday to going to McGavick High School here in Middle Tennessee. All five of our high school marching bands are gonna be over there in competition, and it's just a personal passion of mine, and got to see both Smyrna and Laverne at that football game, see their band's performances, but all five of them will be over there from about eleven AM until about four o'clock in the afternoon. And so, in a short amount of time, I get to see all those folks, so looking forward to it.
And several of them will be at the Contest of Champions at MTSU next weekend, I think.
A few of them, really, yes, sir.
Anything else? Donald?
We had playgrounds mentioned a couple of times tonight, and I failed to answer the question. Probably gotten some emails, things about playground. How are we coming along with update on playgrounds? What is it costing us to keep playgrounds, I guess, safe? And playgrounds are, for what age level do we try to keep playgrounds?
Well, it's the elementary schools, they're, we went to two playgrounds several years ago, those bigger, at the big elementary schools, 'cause one just wouldn't suffice. We paid for that out of, out of special ed stimulus money to, didn't we, Jeff?
Yes, we're upgrading a lot of the surfaces out of special ed stimulus.
Right. The playgrounds, but obviously, the playgrounds were in place, I mean, you know, there was an annual, not an annual, but every so often, I, Mr. Clardy can tell you how often, you know, we had to go back in there with it. Environmentally friendly mulch you put in there was extremely expensive, alternate years, they didn't last long. Even after you, it seemed like a short while after it was replaced, it, it would be kicked out or kind of deteriorate. New material is, I think, the way to travel, don't you agree, Mr. Clardy?
It is, and of course, most of the elementary schools that are getting those playgrounds are, it's a, a lot of them, it's just an area to accommodate special needs children that are there. But we will be saving a lot of money on mulch because of that. And now I have two guys that work on playground pretty much with maybe a third one, so I would say that we have almost one employee that's full-time playground. We have them inspected during the time that the schools were inspected, the same guys inspect them. If they go out and find anything faulty, we get that, that goes into maintenance, and these guys go out and work on it. So, I don't know the exact figure on what kind of money we're spending, but the playgrounds are in better shape right now than they've ever been.
I, I think playgrounds are a vital part of an elementary school, and, and, you know, I just like to, just more in general information, there's, thank you.
What's the life expectancy, expectancy of that material they use?
They tell me that twelve years, they say ten to fifteen years later. Well, when we, when we start to have to replace it, though, the money that we're saving every year by not having to do that should be kind of rolled over here someplace and hang on to it. So, in fifteen years, we come in and don't get hit with a lot of-
I believe you were prompted by the budget man, remember?
We can just let it roll and it's not balanced, nobody touches it.
Sure. Good luck with that, anything, anything else? If not, we're adjourned.